... by Pastor Vernon Tubbs, First Full Gospel Baptist Church. If everyone would please silence your cell phones and if you so choose, please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor?
Heavenly Father, as we come before you this afternoon, we thank you, oh God, as is stated in your word, "For a lack of guidance, a nation falls; but for victories won through many advisors." As we bow our heads today, we come in the name of our only, of your only Son Jesus, the one who hung, bled, and died for us all. And we thank you for the opportunity to gather in service to the people of Beaumont, a city built on hard work, community values, spirit, and enduring faith. As this city council comes together today, we seek your wisdom and direction. We lift up our mayor, city council members, city officials, and every public servant. Grant them clarity of thought, discernment of decisions, and unity in purpose. Let no voice go unheard and let no decision be made without first considering the needs of the people, especially the most vulnerable. We pray for every neighborhood in Beaumont, from Amelia to the Pear Orchard, from downtown to Old Town, North End to South End, South Park to Terrell Park, West End to Volts. May every citizen feel represented, protected, and valued. Strengthen those who serve, our first responders, educators, small business owners, and healthcare workers. Give endurance to those who labor quietly behind the scenes and give hope to those struggling with daily needs. May this meeting be led with humility, grace, and a deep commitment to justice and equity. Remind us, oh Lord, that public service is not a platform for power, but a sacred trust for stewardship. In closing today, oh God, we say thank you as you stated in the word in the book of Michael. He has told you, oh mortal, what is good and what does the Lord require of you? But to do justice and to love kindness and to walk humbly with your God. In your holy name we pray today, in the only wise name, the name of Jesus. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. One nation, under God, this is for all. Can we start off with roll call, please?
Mayor West.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Turner. Councilmember Durio.
Present.
Councilmember Hilliard.
Present.
Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Sherwood. And Councilmember Crenshaw. Thank you.
Well, we've got a full house. Everybody looks happy and it's not too warm in here yet, so it feels good. And we have lots of celebrations, so let's begin them. Our first proclamation is recognizing the month of July as the National Buffalo Soldier Month. Accepting will be Mr. Roscoe Compton, Mrs. Jessie Davis, Mr. Eric Baldwin, and Mr. Jeremy McCollum. Are you, any and all present, and those that are with you may also come forward and receive the proclamation. And then we'd like to give you an opportunity to address us as well. Address everybody, actually.
Hey, how are you? You doing well? How are you? Good to see you. God bless you. You deserve it. Hey, how are you? Good to see you. Those are a little warm.
Yes, yes, yeah.
How are you, sir?
Thanks for being here.
All right, we're gonna get a picture here. Yes. And feel free, right up there to the podium.
Good afternoon. I got volunteered to do this. They always do them that, but anyhow. You know, the reason it's such a important month or such a important day is because the Constitution, I mean, the contribution of the Buffalo Soldiers to the United States, to the history of the United States. If you haven't even read about the history, please feel free to go online. There's a lot of information about the Buffalo Soldiers, okay? Buffalo Soldiers helped get the United States move west. They were the backbone of the United States moving west, okay? When there were not enough people to go ahead and assist the citizens or protect the citizens of the United States from moving west, the Buffalo Soldiers were the men that were called upon to do that. So it was important, the United States that, I mean, I'm sorry, the state of Texas initially recognized this as Buffalo Soldier Heritage Month. Then followed up by a proclamation, not a proclamation, a request by Kamala Harris, get that name right, Kamala Harris to have a National Buffalo Soldier Day, which is July the 28th, all right? So in that, we have found Buffalo Soldier graves here in Beaumont. One is at Evergreen Cemetery. Ms. Will Turner, identify that one. And others are located at the Evergreen, not the Evergreen, I'm sorry, Pear Orchard Cemetery, Blanchett Cemetery. I keep getting the names lost. Pear Orchard Cemetery. So it's important to recognize these people and recognize the history that they, and the backbone that they provided to the United States. You know, and then that those other days exist. We in Beaumont need to recognize them, and I thank you for presenting the proclamation.
Thank y'all. Well, Beaumont this year got the National Arena League team, the Beaumont Renegades here. And this was the first year. And who would have expected the national championship to occur? But it happened right here in Beaumont, Texas. The team they beat, I think, hadn't lost a game in three years until they met the Beaumont Renegades and they lost to them twice. So, and now they are, their first year, they're national champs, and we want to recognize them. We have with us, and I don't see him, but I'm sure he's here, Mr. Rodney Robashow, managing partner. See him in the house? There he is back there, all right. And you and the rest of the team. And also, I've got some other names down here. Mr. Richard Sickler, Assistant General Manager, is that right? Y'all come forward. We've got head coach Corey Mayfield. And then hopefully lots of players and their family as well, and any of the other partners of the business, please come forward, as well as any family members.
Yeah, me too.
Congratulations.
Way to go.
Didn't like that, yeah.
Do it there.
I like it.
Y'all.
Congratulations.
Hey, hey. Rodney got it.
Congratulations.
Yes, yes.
Okay, I have no idea how we're gonna fit everyone, but if the taller players could get maybe to the back, and we'll put the shorter ones in the front.
Right, look out.
Okay, make sure y'all can see me. Councilman Hilliard. There you go, there you go. Okay, that's better.
I'll be easy, man.
Thank you.
Yeah, very much.
Y'all need one. I see neither one. Cool, are you good?
Instagram.
Instagram.
He's educating me. I used to play with a boomerang when I was a kid.
We need to turn, yeah.
Thank you, Mayor, and the city council, city manager, and city attorney. Thank you for inviting us today. This was a big deal for Beaumont. It was big for Beaumont Renegades to come to Beaumont, and the fans are second to none. You know, we went through a lot. And I'm gonna let Sam, he's one of the partners, and Dietrich Wise is another partner. He's an NFL football player today. So he knows a thing or two about the game. And I won't let these guys speak.
Well, what can I say? It's, a man from, a young man from Massachusetts has never felt so welcome in this city. It was, it's such an honor to bring football to a town that expects a lot out of, expects a lot out of any profession, anything professional, anything that you're gonna do at your best. And we didn't bring the best players in. We brought in the right ones. And, and we couldn't be prouder of those players. But also, with those great players comes a great message. And with these three coaches, without these three coaches and them hanging in there and the message of family and everybody doing their job, holding each other accountable, Coach Mayfield, Coach Peace, Coach Solomon. As owners, as owners, I think Dietrich Rodney would agree with me that they definitely, they definitely made us all look good. They made us all look good, these great players and these great coaches. And I couldn't be prouder. This is, this is for you guys. This is for you guys, Dietrich.
Well, it all started with a dream. We had three guys up here who was just talking about what we wanted to do and how we wanted to bring success to Beaumont. And with the great coaching staff and all these guys, we came together day in, day out, made everything happen, and brought a championship to Beaumont. That's it.
And thank you again. You know, the city was super supportive of us. The fans, the first game, were screaming and hollering. I'm like, what are they screaming at? They can't possibly know them. I don't know them, how do they know them? But that's just the crowd we had, and it got bigger and bigger every week. You know, we started in February. We end up going to the championship, first team ever in the history in the NAL to come into the league. No one knew our names. These guys didn't know one another. We beat the number one team the second week of our league and ended up beating them again in the championship. So they really don't like us. They lost two games in three years to Beaumont Renegades, which they did not know. They know us now, they hate us, and that's okay. But, but I want to introduce you to the man in charge, Coach Mayfield. He's put this team together, put the practice together, and we're here today because of him.
Giving honor to God first and foremost. And second, thank you guys for having us. It's an honor to represent the city of Beaumont, and we take that wholeheartedly. These guys are not only great men on the football field, they're even better men in the community. And Beaumont's a better place because of these young men. I'll also say this. Being recognized is a huge deal, and this is an honor. And we stand on that. And we'll continue to do the best that we can to service our community. But one thing we made about football, about this team, we didn't make it about football. We made it about each and every one of them. And once we did that, winning was easy. So thank you guys for having us, and we look forward to next year.
Just about 45 more minutes and we'll be done. But we want to bring in, in the beginning, these guys. In one of the meetings I was in, he played here at Central. And he played his bi district here, and he lost. And he brought that up to the team. And let me tell you, that day, this team became brothers. And they said, "We're gonna win it for you." And he wanted to win for his Beaumont, for his family, for his community, for his old high school. I want to bring him up. Can you, come up, please?
There's nothing really much I can say, man. I'm a Beaumont native, been here all my life. You know, been playing for a long time. After every other season, come back home, always come back to my roots. And it's a big thing for me, you know, to bring a championship home. Like I, like he said, my last time playing in Beaumont, I was in high school and we lost at our home field in playoffs, second round. And that stuck with me for a long time. And I finally got a chance to redeem myself with these great guys, these great coaches and great players. And I couldn't be more happier than, I couldn't be more, you know, happy to represent Beaumont and do it the best of my ability with these great guys. So I thank y'all, appreciate it.
Thank you. And I want to bring up our Assistant General Manager, Richard. He kind of put the glue to the package and got us in trouble and got us out of trouble. So come on up, Richard.
Well, first I want to say thank you to the city of Beaumont. My fiance and our family moved down here from Wyoming in August. Trying to still get used to this humidity, don't know how you do it. But Beaumont's been a great community. It is definitely a football community, and we love it. We plan on being here for years to come. So we thank you guys, thank the entire city of Beaumont, and thank all of our sponsors and all the wonderful fans that came out to our games. Thanks to the coaching staff, the team. Obviously, we couldn't do it without you guys, and we can't wait to go back to back, right? So thank you guys so much for this honor. It's been a privilege, and we just look forward to being bigger and better next year.
One more time. When this group came together, and I met them as a sponsor, just like one of you guys, just supporting Beaumont, supporting the new business in Beaumont. And these owners, they've invested over a million dollars in Beaumont, Texas. This is hotels, restaurants, convenience stores, Market Basket. You know, we live next door to them, and they do a lot of business there daily. So we spent the money back in Beaumont. We appreciate you guys stepping up and supporting us. We do need the community to go forward. It is a expensive ballgame. Pay these guys, feed these guys, that's very expensive. And then, and put them to bed. So it's a big expense. And lastly, I want to bring up our Reverend for the whole year. He was selfishly and gave his time up and supported us in each and every game. He became one of the, one of the guys in the locker room every, every ballgame and practice and so forth. So Reverend J.D. Roberts.
Now, he said he thought I was assistant coach. He made me assistant coach for one game and never told me that again. But no, first, yes, giving all honor to God. I think it was a great experience for these young men. I know them as brothers, but the Beaumont boy, I've been knowing him because he was one of my SOC students. Kind of tell me how old I am. He was one of my SOC kids. So I'm excited for them. I'm mostly excited for Beaumont. We got a long way to go, but the way things are changing and growing in Beaumont, it can't help but get better. And we know we could depend on the council. And by depending on the council, we could depend on the different commodities and everything that we need to continue to feed them. So if you got a hamburger, french fries, chicken in your icebox you want to get rid of, give us a call. But on a serious note, thank y'all for having us.
Again, I want to thank each of you for supporting us, supporting the city, supporting the community. We're here to support you. One of the things we brought to the players when I first met them was, "All the good guys, I'm gonna get you a job here. You're gonna stay. All you other ones, go home." And a lot of them are coming. J.D. is moving, him and his fiance are moving here. He's one of the captains of the team. Been around for eight years in the league. Probably ranked number one as the defensive player. Our quarterback was the VP. Our coach was the VP. We're talking about our rookie quarterback makes the all-pro football team and the VIP quarterback. He beat out guys that have a Heisman Trophy, so, in our league. So the best of the best. Our guy rose to the top, and they'll all tell you, it's all God. So thank you, and God bless you.
Thank you. He was, he was asking about the trophy, but y'all didn't bring that, did you?
We did. We were running late, so it's in the car, but I can get it.
Look on my Facebook page, I got a picture with it.
But we'll bring it up here and put it up there for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Did Pastor Roberts walk outside? All right. So, because we have a recognition for Save Our Children, and it's July 9th, is Know Your County Courthouse. Come on up, Pastor. is Know Your County Courthouse. Come on up, Pastor. And this is, I'm not sure how many years you've been doing that now. 14 years. So giving back, having hundreds of kids come to the courthouse, get acquainted with a lot of public officials and the system, and all the different components of county and city government. So we thank him for that.
I can see you. Much easier. Okay, ready? One, two, three.
Wow, we up here again, huh? Well, again, I can't thank God enough for blessing me and my boy. Matter of fact, this is Danny Sims. This is my vice president. And this is my baby that done grew up from being a little bitty kid to now being on our board at 15 years old. Because I want her to understand that giving is the key to receiving. When we give, we don't give for show. We give because we know that these young people today need some kind of guidance. None of us are perfect. None of us know everything. But if you can just spend five seconds telling somebody you love them, because that's all it takes, five seconds. I practice in the mirror. So five seconds. If you start letting these young people know that you really care about them and you love them, then all the things that we see happening right now wouldn't be happening as much. We can't continue to blame the parents. Because you got to understand, 30 years ago, 35 years ago to be exact, those same parents was on Rittlin. And that Rittlin have took effect. And what you seeing today with our young people is from that past. But again, all we're trying to do is make a difference in Beaumont, Texas. So on behalf of, first of all, let me do this. There's some new council people that have volunteered to come and speak at this year's Know Your County Courthouse. And we did not want y'all to be out of uniform. So we got y'all uniforms. First of all, no, no excessive shorts. You don't wear shorts at Know Your County Courthouse. Let's see here. We got the mayor. Did you go get this shit, Mayor, please? I made sure, well, I remember none of them shorts you had on at the beach yesterday. And then we have Joey. Joey, don't try to flex. Just... And then we have... Ladonna. I ain't gonna say that to you, Ladonna. And then we have Mike Williams. And I know your wife won't lick your one of them pants like Garhead on. And then last but not least, we have Kenneth. I want to thank you guys for volunteering to come and speak to our youth, letting them know what it takes to make a difference. It's hard out there for them. But we didn't forget the other three. So I just want to let y'all know. Okay, that's A.J. Turner. Now, my daughter took care of all this. I didn't do that. Then you go get that to that man right there because he go come and speak. And yours is in the vehicle. Because we made sure we wasn't go forget nobody. But again, on behalf of myself, the SOC nation, Danny and my daughter, we want to thank you for this proclamation. And for y'all, bring y'all kids to the courthouse. I'm tired of the honor reason why they know the courthouse is because of a jailhouse. They got 454 jobs at Jefferson County Courthouse. So let's encourage our young people to find out what's going on. Thank you.
All right. Next, we, we've got a recognition, and I was at a recent luncheon, ExxonMobil through their Exxon 409 Scholars. And we see them here, and I think all of them are in shirts. But we want to recognize all of them. We want to recognize ExxonMobil Beaumont Area Public and Government Affairs Team that's here in the house. So if y'all all come up, and we thank you. And I want y'all to tell Tyler a little bit about the 409 program. Tyler, go ahead and tell people who you are and introduce the rest of the team as well.
Thank you. I'm Tyler Gustafson. I'm the Beaumont Area Public Government Affairs Advisor. This year, I got to lead this program, and last year, I got to see it happen. And started in 2022 with just six students, and we've seen it now grow into 30 students, where we highlight all the different careers available to them at ExxonMobil, and especially right here in Beaumont. We equip them with the tools needed to get jobs at ExxonMobil one day or in the petrochemical industry. And I know, as the mayor mentioned just two weeks ago, we highlighted all of them and all the work that they've done. They showcase all the different careers that they're interested in. And almost every single one of them are interested in pursuing a career in engineering or process operating. And our hope is that they could stay right here and pursue a career in Beaumont. And so we could not do this without Lamar University, LIT, the City of Beaumont, and Beaumont IST. And so I wanted to thank all of y'all for having us. And I want to thank all the students for being here today. So thank y'all.
Thanks ExxonMobil for y'all making this commitment, and BISD for getting on board. And I think those students are from the, all, all the local high schools. Yeah. So that's awesome. The good news continues, folks. So for those that are signed up to make comments, remember that we've got some momentum here going. And so... All right. Next, we have a special presentation recognizing two outstanding Zip Transit bus operators who've shown exceptional safe driving skills. Both have reached over 500 days and over 100,000 miles with zero safety violations. That's incredible. And I'm going to have them, as well as the Zip Transit team, come forward. It's Mr. Tommy Strange and Mr. Tori Newman, I believe. And if I didn't get the name correct, please correct me. But I've got certificates for both of them, if they're able to be here.
Can I go up, Claudia? No, you're good. Okay, ready? Right here. And one, two, three. Got it. Good job.
First of all, I want to thank my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, who given me that ability to drive and to be safe. Without Him, I wouldn't be able to do it.
Amen.
And first of all, I want to thank the mayor, too, and the councils, and my general manager, Ms. Chloe, and the Zip employees. I just thank God for all of them. I've been with Zip for 20 years. It's been a pleasure serving the city of Beaumont. Every day, I find it a pleasure. And out of them 20 years, 13 years been with the special needs. And I find a joy serving on the Pan Transit. As me, I get a chance to meet people that are less fortunate, disabled. And I just find a joy and a pleasure in giving my service to them. Because every day, I see some in wheelchairs, some that don't have limbs, some can't even do for themselves. And I find a joy and a pleasure that I can help them to get to one place to another place. And I give God the praise for that, because He the one that have given me the ability to help them. And thank you too, Ms. Chloe.
I'm just happy to serve humanity, and thank you for the work.
I'm going to try to be brief since it's been a while in recognitions, but that's, that's a challenge for me. Everybody that knows me, I start talking, and it's very hard for me to stop. But I'm going to try to quote something one of the gentlemen's from the football team mentioned. The city of Beaumont does not settle for nothing but the best. And I'm very honored, very proud to be standing right here to some our best that give their best every day. Mr. Newman, he's, he's shouting to talk. He's a very kind person, very caring, just like Mr. Strange, every day, every day. And to put things into perspective, again, I tried not to talk. But you know, this safety system that we have, it's going to be monitoring those operators from the minute they turn on that vehicle to the minute they turn it off. It's going to pick up any type of distraction. It's going to pick up mobile devices. It's going to pick up conversations that are going over. It's going to pick up heartbreaking. It's going to pick up somebody cutting in front of you because you were following too close. You were not keeping those five, three, six seconds. It's a lot. So I can tell it's a challenge for pretty much any of us to try to sit behind that wheel with the traffic, with everything going on around, and for them to be able to accomplish 100,000 miles and more and counting. God willing, it's on her. So we're very proud of them. Really appreciate you taking the time to recognize them. Thank you.
Next, we have the City of Beaumont Communication Update by Tracy Kinnick.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, everyone. In this week's announcements, we're excited to invite everyone to the City of Beaumont's annual Fourth of July Celebration, coming up this Friday, July 4th, from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. at the Downtown Event Center in Lake. It's one of our biggest events of the year, complete with live music, local food trucks, family fun, and of course, a huge fireworks display to wrap up the night. Gates open at 5:00. Fireworks shoot off at 9:00 over the Natures River with the biggest display in southeast Texas. And we also have a special patriotic performance by the Symphony of Southeast Texas that's inside the Julie Rogers at 8:00 p.m. for anyone looking to catch some AC and enjoy some great music. And the entire event is free. Parking downtown is free. Just bring your lawn chairs and blankets for a fun night celebrating our nation's freedoms. That being said, if you're celebrating at home, be mindful of our vets and pets who may be sensitive to loud sounds. And we also have a few reminders on what is legal and what is safe when it comes to your Fourth of July celebrations.
As with every holiday celebration where fireworks are involved, inside the city limits of Beaumont, it is illegal to pop fireworks. That is the city ordinance. A fine can be up to $500. So we really encourage people to leave it to the professionals. The City of Beaumont puts on a great Fourth of July celebration, so we encourage people to come downtown and enjoy that.
But the fireworks that they can purchase, they can use them outside the city limits. But we want to remind them if they do use them, to space and make sure that children are properly supervised and never consume alcohol by using fireworks. Lighting multiple fireworks at one time results in these type injuries. The most common one is the eye injuries. Bundling too many fireworks together, trying to, the bigger effect, which leads to injuries. And a few years ago, we even had an up and coming young man lose his hand in a fireworks accident.
As with celebratory gunfire, it is extremely dangerous. The Beaumont Police Department has absolutely enforced this in years past. We have found people posting on social media, shooting firearms in the air. And it's so important to remember, what goes up must come down. And every year across the nation, people are injured and sometimes killed by celebratory gunfire that's been shot in gunfire that's been shot into the air. There's also property damage. So, every morning after fireworks holiday, we receive a lot of calls in reference to vehicles that have sustained damage from gunfire, as well as homes. And we absolutely will pursue charges against anyone who does that.
As always, the city of Beaumont has family entertainment from 5:00 to 9:00 PM at the Beaumont Event Center, culminating with a fireworks show at 9:00 PM. Stay safe.
Beaumont bond committee made, excuse me, members have been working tirelessly on what they think are the critical needs for our area and what should be considered for the city's first bond election in 43 years. And they want your input. Join us for a virtual open house, July 4th through the 13th, online at beaumontbonds.com and in person at our open house Saturday, July 12th, from 10:00 to noon. That's at the Lake Site Center Auditorium. You can find more information on the city's website or at beaumontbonds.com. Hurricane season is here, and we want you to stay informed and ready by making sure that you're registered with STAN and STEER. STAN is the southeast Texas Alerting Network. It gives you real-time alerts about emergencies affecting your area. You can sign up at thestan.com. STEER, or State of Texas Emergency Assistance Registry, make sure that those with medical or mobility needs aren't forgotten during a disaster. Just call 211 to sign up there. Join us for our Summer Movies in the Park series. These are free, family-friendly movie nights happening at different parks throughout the city. Bring your blanket or long, excuse me, lawn chair and enjoy a movie under the stars. July 11th, catch Sonic 3 at Sprott Park. July 25th, it's Mufasa at Charlton Pollard Park. And on August 8th, catch IF at Central Park. All movies start at dusk, and they are free and open to the public. And it's not just the Beaumont Renegades who are representing our city and doing great things athletically. A big congratulations to Beaumont's own Quentin Thomas Jr., who accomplished something never done before in the Golden Triangle. He competed in 2025 USA Boxing National Junior Olympics, facing five different opponents to bring home gold. So, a huge congratulations to Quentin and his family for making history and proudly representing Beaumont on the national stage as well. Finally, a sweet moment captured on camera is earning Beaumont some welcome recognition. This picture taken at a cops and kids event at Magnolia Park is going viral for all the right reasons. It captures the essence of what it means to be a public servant. Police Chief Tim Ochnicek was in the middle of a heated match of tug-of-war when he stopped to offer a needed hug to a little girl on the opposite team. This sweet moment was posted online and ultimately caught the attention of CBS National News Lead Correspondent David Bignam, who shared his take on what happened that day.
This photo went viral, and I want to give you the backstory. It's not a story about race, it's not even a story about policing. It's a story about humanity and trust. In Beaumont, Texas, this precious three-year-old girl named Ari was at a cops and kids event at a local park. And she got upset because her sister was winning a tug-of-war competition, and she was losing. So, she ran in tears to the nearest adult and jumped in his arms. That adult just so happens to be the police chief. She didn't know that, she just felt safe. He hugged her, whispered something kind, and next thing you know, she was back in the game, this time on his team. And they won, of course. This is how trust begins, not in crisis, not in fear, but in joy, in play, in the ordinary moments that become something more. This doesn't fix everything, but they matter, because when trust is built early, it lasts a long time. These are the moments that matter.
Thanks, Chief, for showing the nation the moments that matter most, all of us here in the city of Beaumont. And that's all for this week's announcements.
All right. And our last presentation is our emergency management coordinator, Shaquena Nobles. And I didn't see you over there, Shaquena. And she is, it's on the notification system and the emergency alert overview. So, the floor is yours.
Good afternoon, council. What a great day to be a part of Beaumont, right? It's so much positivity today, and my heart is super full. Again, good afternoon to all of you. I'm sitting at the dais. My name is Shaquena Nobles, as already been mentioned for some of the council members I haven't had the opportunity to meet yet. And I am going to stand before you today to give you guys a presentation on evacuation, notifications and warning, and the outdoor siren systems. Thank you, Tina. Based off of previous comments that have been brought forth, not just here at the podium, but also to our office, these were the three hot topics that kind of came out and stuck out from their presentation specifically last week. And so, I'm gonna cover each one of those for you guys as best as I could, and hopefully give you some good sound information for that. Next slide. Okay. So, the evacuation plan and annex is actually N X E for the city's emergency operations plan. Consequently, that plan is actually under review as we speak right now. Every five years, those plans have to be, well, they're reviewed annually, and then every five years, they're submitted to the state. And it just so happens, this is the time for N X E to be evaluated. And that's what we've been actively doing, both for the time and in preparation of the upcoming 2012, the middle of 2025 hurricane season that we're in right now. Just a quick reminder, for those of you who've heard it before, our emergency management plan, our emergency operations plan, is all hazard-focused. And basically, what that means is that any hazard that we can potentially have to activate a plan for, that plan should cover it, regardless as to what caused it. So, particularly with evacuation, so to speak, you can evacuate for a lot of different things, and that plan covers all of that, from evacuating from an area that may be under some type of industrial incident to even a mass citywide evacuation. So, all of those things are in there. That plan is listed on the city's website, and so I take the point, I make the point to make that point, so that as citizens are reading that plan, they know that this is an all-hazard, all-inclusive plan that includes all of those. But specifically for today, I'm going to focus on mass citywide evacuation, since that's pretty much the evacuation topic that's brought up most often during hurricane season. So, no, not yet, but that's fine, you can leave it there, it doesn't matter. In the event that the region is under an impending threat of a hurricane or an evacuation, there are several things that are going on at that time in preparation of that storm that's actually out in the Gulf. One of the main things that we're doing is coordinating with the National Hurricane Center, the local, regional, National Weather Service, which is in Lake Charles for Beaumont, the Texas Division of Emergency Management, and our local jurisdictions that are also being impacted by this particular storm. This coordination effort that we have goes as far west as Houston, and it goes as far east as Orange to the end of Texas, because any evacuation routes are at that time could actually flow through Beaumont from any of those jurisdictions. So, we're talking to all of those partners in preparation for that. A key thing to remember, though, is should a mass citywide evacuation be called, typically it begins with a voluntary evacuation, which is why one of the main things that we recommend to our citizens when we go out and give these presentations is to don't wait for the mandatory evacuation, go during the voluntary evacuation. So, this reason we call, or it should, we have the need to call for a mandatory evacuation, we take a consensus approach with our regional cities. And that means the cities furthest to the coast start that evacuation process first, which is another reason why we offer, or we call for a mandatory evacuation. But the key takeaway for the citizens is to, one, have a family plan, know where you're going, know, bring what you need that best suits your family, and then again, don't wait for that voluntary evacuation. Several citizens rely heavily on the local news media for weather forecasts, and they have a great deal of trust with those weather forecasts. And I always tell them, listen to them. I mean, you don't have to wait for that voluntary evacuation to be given, you can follow the voluntary evacuation. One of the big differences in that is that once a mandatory evacuation is to be given, then all roads lead north. And so, you no longer have the discretion, or you can go the route that you want to grow, you're gonna have to go along those evacuation routes. Next slide, Tina. And so, this map that you guys are looking at today is the actual 2025 State of Texas evacuation routes. Tech dot released this about a month ago there. And if you, you guys can see, all of these evacuation routes actually start closest to the coast, and they lead north, and that includes Highway 82 and 69, which run directly through Beaumont. That traffic is actually flowing through there, okay? And so, the expectation that we have and things that we're planning for is going to be that heavy traffic and increased traffic on Highway 69, where Highway 69 and I-10 merges in Beaumont, it flows right through the heart of the city. But also, if you're looking at that map, Highway 90 leads you to one of the evacuation roads that's, that Galveston County used and so forth on the other side. So, this particular map here and additional Tech dot evacuation routes can actually be found on their website. You can also scan that QR code there for those that are in the audience or those that are watching online, and it will take you directly to that site so that you can have a look at those yourself. So, I'll pause here if y'all have any questions for me. I know that was a lot of information on evacuation. Okay. Excellent, Tina. Okay. So, notifications and warnings. There are two primary types of communications that the Office of Emergency Management does with our citizens, and that is we can send out notifications, and then we send out warnings. And there's a difference between the two. Notifications are typically informational. They require no action from the city. While they are very, very important, and we don't want you to ignore them, they're just something to notify you that we're doing that. And those are normally sent either via text, or email, or by phone call. And there is actually several ways that you can sign up to receive alerts from the city. You can do it through notify me, that little icon at the top of the screen there. If you go to the city's main website, you can sort of sign up there, and then you can get all the informational alerts from the city that the Communication Department pulls and that they post out, and we work in partnership with those for some of those notifications. And then you can also register through the Regional Southeast Texas Alerting Network, which is what our office sends out notifications, and particularly warnings, primarily warnings that come from the Beaumont Office of Emergency Management, they come through the STAN. And that platform is used specifically for those warnings. Now, though, that platform is used not just by us, but it's used by other local jurisdictions, it's used by the industry personnel. And so, whatever the citizens sign up for, they'll receive those type of alerts or notifications through the STAN. But specifically, when it comes to Beaumont, we lean towards using the STAN specifically to warn the public of what's going on. The STAN uses a very robust notification system, and it reaches all various types of media, and that includes phone, email, text, websites. We can post the websites from STAN there as well. And so, I'll go a little bit more into detail about that notification in the next slide. That's fine. So, we have a couple of primary warning systems. Now, I told you guys about, a lot about notifications and warnings, but the warning system that we have began, one begins with the emergency alerting system, and this is kind of not in any particular order, but I wanted to break that down so you guys can understand how that works. So, that primary warning system includes emergency alerting system, wireless emergency alerting, and the Southeast Texas Alerting Network. And all three of these platforms work in conjunction together to make sure their warnings go out timely and efficiently through all methods of communication. So, when the emergency alert activation is activated, it sets off a chain reaction, so to speak, designated to get critical information out. And I'm specifically talking about weather in this example, and I'll go back and clarify if I need to. So, for instance, let's say the National Weather Service activates EAS to send out a warning, a tornado warning, a severe thunderstorm warning. They'll put on there, and they'll, they'll initiate that emergency activation alert. This message includes different types of digital codes and audio, and the emergency alerting system picks up that message through the National Weather Radio Network. It picks up that alert. And any other participants in the emergency alerting system, which we are, receive the alert and then are required to interrupt programming to replay it. So, that is how it breaks through your TV. It breaks through the radio that you're listening to. You get that loud tone on the TV, followed by a banner, and sometimes some communication that's actually going on with that. And that's, that's the emergency alerting system working. Now, in conjunction with the emergency alerting system, you also have the wireless emergency alerts, and that is how we tag your cell phones, okay? Those are the messages that you get with a very distinctive tone and the vibration that's associated with it. It is going through the wireless emergency alerting network, and the vehicle that it uses is called I-Pause, or the Integrated Public Alert and Warning System. And so, you get your hazardous weather alerts through there, you get your Amber alerts through there, you get your presidential alerts, all these different types of alerts, they come through the I-Pause Alerting Network there. Okay? So, ultimately, if you are watching TV, if you are listening to the radio, if you have a phone nearby, that emergency alerting system in conjunction with these other primary warning systems ensures that you get that message loud and clear, okay? It is, it's very clear. Now, if you don't get the message, there is an option. Most cell phone carriers allow for you to opt out of it. And if you do that, then you, you, you might not get the vibrating or the tone. Some phones leave a, just a little message banner, and you don't get it. But you have that option to opt out, just like you have that option to opt out of the STAN, which is Beaumont's part of, we're part of that regional alerting notification system, and we can manage that system right there in our office. Okay? So, even if you don't get those weather alerts there, or if they don't meet the parameters to trigger I-Pause or anything like that, if you are registered with STAN, you would still get the alerts from us as we issue out that warning. That is why it is very, very important that the citizens register with the STAN as well, so that they can get those emergency alerts for us. And we have the ability to kind of go in, if a citizen's saying, hey, I'm not getting these alerts, we have the ability to go in and look to see if they're getting the alerts, or if they're registered for the system or not, and we, we do that often. So, I strongly, strongly encourage, and I probably can't encourage that enough, for our citizens to go and register to receive those, those STAN, STAN alerts. I think I covered it, Tina. Any questions? Nope? All right, moving right on along. So, we're gonna talk about outdoor storm sirens now. So, for reference, in 2023, Chief Ochnicek, former Emergency Management Coordinator, came before council, and he talked about the use of outdoor storm sirens as a means to issue weather warnings. During that presentation, he went over a proposal that was submitted to him and Ms. Adeline, who's, who's come up here and speak a couple of times. And so, I went back and I reviewed that presentation that he gave, I reviewed the proposals that was given, I reached back out to this company. And so, I wanted to provide a quick overview of what was said at that time and what the viability of that, that proposal is today. And one of the first things that I wanted to highlight, though, is that in the letter that Storm Sirens sent to Ms. Adeline, they pointed out that outdoor sirens are meant solely for outdoor warnings. You, you, you're not, or you can't always hear them indoors due to the varying types of construction material that may block out a sound or something like that. And we have like ExxonMobil, who has outdoor sirens support of Beaumont, and sometimes when those go off, if you're inside, you're not gonna hear them. And that's because outdoor sirens are meant for individuals that are outdoors. So, that's a very true statement, and I probably can't stress that enough, that it's, it's, it's for outdoors, you, you have to be outdoors, okay? And there's a series of events that happen when those warnings start to go out, and the first thing you're going to do is you're gonna get in on all those primary warning systems that I just talked about briefly, you're gonna get them, get them there first. And then that would be the last step in those notifications, warnings. Okay? Storm sirens would basically just add additional redundancy in an already redundant notification system that goes out. Some of you guys have given us feedback at the office during the recent times that they've gotten alerts multiple times for the same exact warning that goes out. But that's just a testament of the storm. But that's just a testament of the storm, of the system working the way it should. In fact, one of the things that Ms. Allen said when she stood there was she was grateful to receive that, that national alert that came out. Well, that, all of that was part of the warning systems that we have in place. So that's telling you that those warnings are working and that they're, they're, they're going out. And so, you know, I'm appreciative of that as well. So the outdoor sirens, not only are they best used in, in, in tone only, but they are limited to picking up threats or high wind events that are in excess of seventy miles per hour. And so even though we've had some windy thunderstorms that have come in here and it's kind of shaking some things up, we have not reached that threshold of a seventy mile per hour storm yet that comes through there that would even trigger the outdoor sirens and things like that to go off. So, but it's the industry standard there that is to, to, to use it just for tone and it means shelter in place, okay? Sirens are most commonly used in jurisdictions that have identified tornadoes as a primary hazard during their hazard analysis or their hazard assessment, which is what we do when we go in and we survey the jurisdiction to figure out what we're most prone or what we're most likely to experience. So for example, it's often brought up that the Dallas-Fort Worth area has those outdoor sirens. Well, they also are in part of that tornado alley that extends all the way up to Arkansas. So that's why they have that under their hazard analysis. That's one of the primary things there. You can go ahead, Tina. However, under Beaumont's hazard analysis, our primary hazard analysis are severe storms, flooding, hurricanes, those types of things, which are hazards that we wouldn't, that would not necessarily trigger a, a outdoor siren, so to speak, okay? So just to give you guys some history of that, over twenty years ago, way long before my time here, the outdoor sirens in Beaumont were removed due to infrequency of use and effectiveness of warning the public. And they were expensive and costly to maintain and repair those sirens whenever they go down. And I'll talk to you guys a little bit more about that here shortly. Also, as we have moved into more modern day technology, the effectiveness of the warnings are better off in some, excuse me, in some of the ways that I mentioned to you guys earlier today, okay? So while we are not immune to high wind events, and I don't want to give that impression that we're immune to them, quite frankly, they just don't happen often here. And the way our terrain is set up sometimes, by the time we would even pick it up on radar, sometimes they, they won't even pick up on radar, but by the time it will pick up on radar, we've extended, we've extended well beyond that, okay? So that's just kind of what, kind of something that I had wanted to bring forth to y'all. In preparation for, well, I'm sorry, you can go to the next slide, Tina. As I review the viability of the last siren proposal that was given to you guys and the last presentation that was given by Tim and Ms. Allen, I reached out to several other jurisdictions that have similar hazard analysis or assessment as Beaumont, such as Deer Park, Baytown, that has those different types of sirens. I reached out and they, they all provided the same, same exact feedback. They use them very infrequently. And their protocols only call for them to use them for outdoor use only. And it's in conjunction with their primary warning systems, which is the same as ours. It goes through all of those, those particular methods first. And so that's a very robust warning system that's already in, in place. In the 2023 proposal that was given and presented on, and after quite a bit of back and forth, that company, which was Storm Sirens, finally settled on a cost of a little over a million dollars. It was one point three million to be exact for twenty-nine sirens in Beaumont. And that would include some gaps in coverage for the less populated area. Additionally, those sirens in that particular proposal was just short shot of a mile radius that you could hear them. Some of the other warning companies that I, I reached to, to kind of see where they were or what the industry standard was, they, they make it a mile, but not much, much more than a mile. So either way it goes, you're looking at anywhere between twenty-nine plus sirens that we would have to put in Beaumont and each one of them, the cost rises depending on, on that. However, the one point three million quote that was given during the last presentation remains fairly consistent today. And it hasn't been much change in it. And one thing that that quote did not have, that it should have, and something that we will be looking for if there was the direction of council is that they have a maintenance cost because those things have to be tested. They have to be maintained and they have to be replaced whenever they go down. And so on average, you're looking at an additional thirty to forty thousand dollars a year in an annual maintenance cost that's associated with the sirens. So that's just, you know, goes to the expectancy of that. Storm sirens and most other sirens have a lifespan of about twenty-five to thirty-five years. And given Beaumont's history of storms or high wind storms that would trigger that, we have less storms that would trigger a siren than it has lifespan because, you know, we, we, we just haven't had, we haven't had them frequently like that. So you might get one or two uses out of them over a twenty to thirty-five year lifespan. And I, we looked at storm data dating all the way back to nineteen fifty-six. And in nineteen fifty-six, we've had a little more than thirty-five high wind storms. And of those storms, they were associated with maybe a hurricane or something like that where you wouldn't have the outdoor sirens or the citizens would already be gone. Okay, and so the most comprehensive one that I found was the City of Pasadena, which is really close to Beaumont as far as hazard capabilities and what we would be faced with. And they got a warning system recently and it was one point five million dollars for the turnkey. And they have an annual, a thirty-five thousand dollar a year annual cost associated with them. So the, the biggest thing that I wanted to bring forth, you can go to the next slide, Tina, I'm sorry. The biggest thing that I wanted to bring forth to you guys was that the warning systems that we have in place, if you have them, if you have a weather radio, if you have a cellphone, if you have a TV, if you have any of those things, you have them, you will get those warnings that come, come with us. In addition to what is triggered and activated by the EAS, which we also have the capability in our office to activate the EAS system. If it doesn't meet those parameters, you'll still send out an alert. Just past time, a lot of y'all got two, three, four alerts because they changed the time that it expired. So I sent it out again. And so when you do that, regardless as to if you registered or not, and we start tagging WIA, which is the Wireless Emergency Alerts, or we start tagging any of those other additional systems, you're going to get it. You're going to get the alarms. So this right here is an example of a, of a weather radio. Y'all can't have it. It's for somebody else. And I hope she's here so that I can give it to her. And that's pretty much all that I have. If y'all have any additional questions, comments, concerns, be happy to answer them.
Councilman Durio.
The price tag of one point three million, is that for the whole twenty-nine or is that per tower?
No, that was the entire system itself.
And the, the maintenance, the thirty thousand, same thing for the?
Right, that's to maintain it annually.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Noble. All right, for those that are here for proclamations, recognitions and presentations, we set a record. No, I don't know that we did. And you would like to leave, now's the time to do so, and thank you for coming. After the regular meeting, we will recess into executive session to discuss our and our deliberate economic development negotiations in accordance with Section 551.087 of the Government Code to wit specifically Project Riverfront and Downtown Hotel Project. Also consider matters related to contemplating or pending litigation in accordance with Section 551.071 of the Government Code, Caleb Fenter and Beaumont Professional Firefighters Local 399 Interveners versus City of Beaumont, Christopher S. Boone, Kenneth Williams, Roy West, Earl White, Taylor Neill, Mike Getz, Odwin Samuel, Charles Dureo, Albert Turner and Randy Fellshaw. Calls number B two one zero two four four. Now we're going to move into public comments. Now's the time for any citizen who wishes to speak. You may make public comments on the consent agenda and our regular agenda items, one through eight, ten and eleven, or any other topic. Citizens wishing to speak on item number nine will be given the opportunity to speak during the public hearing that is scheduled later in this meeting. The city clerk will call your name when it's your time to speak. When you approach the podium, please say your address, city and state if it wasn't red. You will have three minutes for public comments. The green light will come on when you approach the podium and the red light will come on when your time is up. Please be reminded that myself nor council can respond whenever you're making comments, but someone from our office will be in contact with you.
Teresa Goodness, nine eighty, nine eighty-five nineteenth Street, Beaumont, Texas. Adam D. on the consent agenda.
Hello. Good afternoon, Mayor, council members, city manager and staff. My comments are in support of the application for the Emergency Supplemental Historic Preservation Fund grant through the National Park Service, which requires no local match. We love those, right? Two city-owned historic buildings qualify for this grant because they sustained damages during Hurricane Barrel in 2024. The Jefferson Theater and the Temple to the Brave. In particular, I'd like to comment on the Jefferson Theater. The theater is an irreplaceable cultural treasure in Southeast Texas, a symbol of Beaumont's artistic spirit, architectural legacy and civic pride. Built in nineteen twenty-seven, this beautifully preserved old Spanish-style theater is listed on the National Register of Historic Places, recognized as a recorded Texas historic landmark and remains one of the only historic theaters still in operation between Houston and Lafayette. For nearly a century, it has served as a stage for legendary performances, classic films, community events and educational tours, continuing to enrich lives across generations. But today, this iconic structure faces a serious threat. During Hurricane Barrel, the Jeffersons suffered significant water intrusion due to aging and deteriorated masonry tuck pointing. Rain penetrated weakened mortar joints, leading to damage across the interior. Plaster walls, wood framing, insulation and decorative finishes were all compromised. Without immediate restoration, this damage risks endangering both the historic fabric of the building and the multimillion-dollar restoration investment that was made by the community over the past thirty years. This grant represents more than emergency repair. It is an essential step in preserving a critical landmark. Restoring the Jeffersons' masonry envelope will ensure the building's long-term resilience, protect its ornate interiors and historic finishes, and safeguard the city's investment in a restored, fully operational theater. Furthermore, the Jefferson is not just a building. It's an engine of economic and cultural development. It draws visitors to downtown Beaumont, supports local artists and businesses, and helps foster a vibrant arts district. Supporting this grant will preserve not only our past, but also ensure future generations continue to experience the wonder, beauty and legacy of the Jefferson Theater. This is about protecting our history and keeping it alive. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kate Hambright, seven Chesapeake Hollow, Beaumont, Texas. Adam D. on the consent agenda.
Good afternoon. My name is Kate Hambright, Marker Chair of the Jefferson County Historical Commission. My comments are in support of the application for the Emergency Supplemental Historic Preservation Fund grant through the National Park Service, which requires no local match. Two city-owned historic properties qualify for this grant, and I would like to comment on the Temple to the Brave. This war memorial was built by the Daughters of the American Revolution in nineteen thirty-one, nineteen thirty-two and donated to the City of Beaumont upon its completion. Originally dedicated to Texas servicemen of all wars and consecrated to world peace, the temple was subsequently rededicated to American servicemen and women of all wars in two thousand and seven. It is an architectural treasure reflecting a high integrity of design, workmanship and materials, particularly displayed in the building's spectacular leaded arc glass windows that today have a replacement value of almost one hundred thousand dollars. The windows depict images relating to both World War One and scenes from Texas history. This beautiful late Gothic Revival structure has been designated as a recorded Texas historical landmark and its nomination to the National Register of Historic Places has been approved by the Texas Historic Commission. For almost one hundred years, it has served as a functional memorial to our military, both living and deceased, providing space for reflection as well as displays of memorabilia. The DAR continues to provide docent-led tours of the building and its exhibits. The temple's repository of records educates visitors to the cause of war and the values of peace. During Hurricane Barrel, the Temple to the Brave suffered significant water intrusion due to its aging envelope and structural systems. The storm exploited existing vulnerabilities and exacerbated longstanding issues, including roof failure, failed masonry joints and stone spalls, rotting window stools and seals and doors, subsurface water intrusion and moisture weakened floor stability, aged and unvented plexiglass window coverings, compromised stained glass letting, interior plaster cracking and voids in structural integrity. Repairs under this grant would protect the temple's integrity and value as a historic and significant landmark and ensure its long-term resilience while honoring and preserving military heritage. The site serves as a memorial to servicemen and women and maintaining it respects their sacrifice and safeguards a space for reflection on their service. Preserving the structure ensures continued access for students, veterans, historians and the public who seek to understand the legacy of American military and the volunteers who endeavor to honor them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Scott Andrus, ninety sixty-five Landis Road, Beaumont, Texas.
Thank you, Mayor West and City Council. I apologize for stuttering and call me rantarded. I'm going to take less than three minutes. I'm going to go for two minutes. I, in nineteen seventy-eight, I took a tour of Vicksburg National Cemetery for Civil War. More men and women died in that war than every other war put together. And at the G.I. Thorpe store, I had my original social security number brought up. My last four is seven four eight zero, and Jesus is my hero. Who wins the war? No one. I'm not Tom Cruise, but I was in a coma for Asia. I spent ten years in Thailand. I was dead before days. I heard one voice when the US Department of State thought I was brain dead, they turned off the respirator. I heard your work is not yet done. By the grace of God, I bombed out that respirator, walked out of hospital that day and let them come home in Thailand. Every May, we have Cobra gone. Thailand is red, white and blue like we are. They still love America. We have the American dream. I want to thank you. Those bus drivers are warriors. There's one man from Detroit, when I lived on South Eleventh Street, one day my wallet fell out with money in it. Next day, from across the street said boss. I said, I'm nobody's boss. Jesus is my boss. Said, here's your wallet. That's honor. That's valor. If I had to walk everywhere I've been in the city, I'd be dead right now. Those bus drivers have a prayer chain, not a pyramid's cave. So thank you. Thank you for what you do because each one of you, when you tell someone have a blessed day. Last Wednesday, a young man who they call Red had a grand mal seizure. I went inside some other place called four zero nine eight three two one two three four. Got him an MS paramedic on line. They saved that man's life. All lives matter. Being an ex-POW, I mean, I was a prisoner of war. Anyone who loved war is psychotic. So thank you, all of you. AJ, thank you for that navy blue, brother. I'm Mike Gilligan's Island, Mayor Roy West. We still got here, brother. They call it Willow Peak. My mother and dad are actually buried in Drew Brees, Jersey, in Edger, Louisiana. Hurricane Laura Delta, we had F-five tornails through the entire state, even Caddo Lake and God Made Lake in Shreveport. So thank you. The courage these men and women show makes a difference. So keep doing what you're doing. And you're busy people. I appreciate you. Mr. Turner, I'd like to see you after meeting if you have time. God bless you all. And that still means something. We call it the incident. That red is our blood. Inside your blood, your blood is actually purple. That's color royalty. But when it has oxygen, it turns red. Thank you for what you do. You make a difference. There's people out there struggling every day to keep dehydrated, officer. Like, let me tell you something. Detective Hancock, one of my friends was murdered. We got to my apartment. I'm like, God, I'm trying to leave. Hancock said, how long y'all been here? Two hours. The supervisor hadn't been yet. The man is absolutely incorruptible. Keep doing what you're doing. It only took two minutes and forty-five seconds. Thank you, for real.
Thank you.
Stephanie Romero, twenty-nine eleven, West Boston, Nederland, Texas. Stephanie Romero, twenty-nine eleven, West Boston, Nederland, Texas. Item number ten on the agenda.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council members, city leadership. My name is Stephanie Romero, and I am currently serve as the Quality Assurance and Improvement Supervisor for the EMS civilian division of the Beaumont Fire Department. Today, I stand before you instead of attending the funeral for the father of one of our paramedics, a colleague and a very good friend I've worked beside for twenty years. That is the position Agenda Item Ten placed me in today, to be off and present for my friend, or to stand before you so our concerns could be heard. I've served the city for over twenty-three years. Like every civilian EMS employee in our division, I now face uncertainty about not only my classification, retirement, pay, and benefits, but also my very future. While you may see Item Ten as simply resolving a legal matter involving a former employee, I see a direct correlation to future contract negotiations that cannot be ignored. Today's decision will actively shape the terms of EMS inclusion in a collective bargaining agreement, a process that has yet to include the very professionals it directly impacts, the medics. To date, civilian EMS personnel have not been formally included in negotiation proceedings. We have not voted for union representation, and we have not received a proposal that clearly specifies our roles, structure, or benefits. The most recent documents shared during negotiations excluded multiple EMS administrative positions, including mine, a role mandated by the regulatory authority for the city's EMS provider license, excuse me. While EMS was referenced in portions of the draft, key provisions such as pay, assignment benefits, and educational stipends lacked consistency and equity compared to those outlined for other personnel. If the goal of Item Ten is to resolve a legal matter, a legal formality that would allow future negotiations to move forward in good faith, I respect that. I sincerely respect that, just as I support any effort to reach an agreement grounded in equity and parity with factual representation. But for the record, EMS inclusion can't be assumed, and our consent can't be retrospectively applied. I take this issue very seriously, and not just for myself, but for every medic in our division. Here with us today are just a few. We deserve a voice in decisions that will shape our future, and I hope today marks the beginning of a process guided by fairness, transparency, and respect. Not assumptions or silence. Right now, EMS is standing on the outside looking in, begging for a seat at the table and for our voices to be heard. I hope this council chooses to open the door for us rather than shut it quietly behind us. I appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kevin Chance, nine thirty-two, West Lucas, Beaumont, Texas.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and City Manager for being here today. While I realize that some of you may not have a vote in decisions regarding tax abatements, I'm here today to remind you of the power of your voice. You've been elected to represent a community, and we ask that you hear our concerns, decide your position, and represent the concerns in your areas of influence. Be an advocate for the voice of the people you serve in every place where decisions are being made. With that in mind, I want to address tax abatements and their impact on our communities. Texas is open for business. What does that mean for Texans? More business should mean more jobs, more tax revenue, and stronger communities. Yet while Texas offers generous tax abatements to attract corporations, these benefits often go to companies and out-of-state workers, not to Texas residents. More businesses should mean more jobs, more tax revenue, and stronger communities. Yet while Texas offers generous tax abatements to attract corporations... Yes. Southeast Texas, home to major industries, sees few lasting gains. Corporations are acquired only to prefer local hires. I say "only" to prefer local hires with no accountability. As a result, many jobs go to temporary out-of-state per diem workers. Texans are footing the bill while receiving little in return. These companies thrive here but offer no permanent growth or livable wages. Meanwhile, they drain local resources and strain our infrastructure. If they're benefiting from our tax dollars, the least they can do is provide permanent well-paying jobs with benefits, protect the resources they use, and reinvest in our communities. Let's talk about Texas a little bit. Education in Texas ranks near the bottom nationally. In a recent survey, placed Texas 49th in healthcare. You can thank Arkansas for holding that 50th place. Most Texans live paycheck to paycheck. Over fourteen percent earn poverty wages. That's less than $15 an hour in a state where surviving requires at least $55,000 annually. And as corporations dodge taxes, property owners must make up a big difference. Our elected officials must secure a better deal for Texans. Big business must invest in Texas, and you must invest in us, the people who put you in office. Our voices are being drowned out by corporate money that buys tax exemptions and regulatory escape at our expense. Trading our clean air, public lands, and fair wages for corporate favoritism is just wrong. So, why is this all important? Business is important for our state's growth, but responsible, regulated, and tax businesses necessary for our state's survival. So, we, the people, we demand the following: that our representatives champion the people, not corporations; that companies moving to Texas hire at least 60% local workers in permanent benefit positions; that a bipartisan commission assess and enforce environmental compliance; and that any company receiving abatements...
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Alan.
Tucker. Dean Tucker, twenty-five fifty Long Avenue, Beaumont, Texas.
Hello. Dean Tucker, twenty-five fifty Long Avenue. Super happy to be here today to speak with you and Mayor West and City Council. Thank you for all the work you do. Have a very simple message that I think can make a big impact. The world is in such a dark place now, and I think what I have to share can make a big impact on the world. Very simple idea, the world needs now light, truth, and healing more than ever. I do know that there are some people that do not believe in Jesus Christ, and that's really okay, but no one can deny that there are not teachings attributed to Jesus Christ, which I wish to call your attention to, and by simply following these teachings, we could change the world. Jesus encouraged us all to tell the truth for our freedoms, learn to forgive others, make friends with your enemies, love one another, or at least be kind to one another, help the poor and the homeless, and of course, heal the sick among you. My wife and I joined a Christian church in 1999 that originated in Brazil in the 1940s that uses a highly esteemed healing herbal tea commonly called ayahuasca. One of the other healing agents that we also used during some of the services was also a highly esteemed herb commonly known as cannabis or marijuana. The church considers it a sacred plant and refers to it as Santa Maria because they feel it is a gift from Mother Mary. Which makes sense because it is widely known, acknowledged to have more healing properties than any herb on the face of the earth, as well as being profoundly safe to use. What I also learned many years ago was that there are many other profoundly safe and healing medicines that our government is trying to keep hidden from us through the use of fraud, fear, and deception and lies. I'm simply claiming right now I have a legal right and a freedom for the use and the production and distribution of all these safe and healing medicines under the protection of the First Amendment of the Constitution of the United States. And if any elected official or lawmaker in this country that does not support my legal right to practice Christianity, please let me know. I have no desire at all to break any law or go to jail.
Thank you.
Hallelujah. Amen. Thank you, Jesus.
Thank you.
Charlie Crabbe, nine twenty-eight East Drive, Beaumont, Texas.
Hello, Mayor West, Council, Mr. Williams and staff. Another nice day in Beaumont, our town. We've really had some good information this afternoon, and it's great. And the renegates, I guess they deserve a parade, and we want to save the Jefferson and the Memorial to the Brave. And I just wanted to thank the fire, police, and Water Department, the Sewer and Drainage, garbage trash pickup. I hope I haven't left out anybody. Oh, yes, the Legal Department, Ms. Reed. Counsel, she will keep you informed. I love when Ms. Reed speaks up. Doesn't Communications do a great job? That was great, and the emergency system, good presentation. Oh, yeah, what about the engineering and code enforcement? And of course, Ms. Broussard and the... What's Ms. Broussard do?
Just sit here. I just sit. Operate this machine.
Come on, give me a... Give me some help. Okay. Let's jump over to President Trump. Boy, didn't he do a pull a good one when he got the world's attention when he used our military to bomb the Iran nuclear facility. We'll see what that brings. All right. Do I have anything else? My golly, I've got forty-seven seconds here. Anyway, oh, yeah, that's right. Thank everybody for listening, and have a good week.
Thank you, Mr. Crabbe.
Yolanda Reynolds, forty-four fifty-five El Paso, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon, Mayor West and Council, my fellow Beaumont citizens. I'm actually here to keep the momentum going that's been going today. I first have to thank my Lord and Savior because my family had a very big emergency on last week, and I contacted Beaumont City. And in speaking with someone in supervisory position, they moved very quickly on the emergency situation. So, I've come to say that there's been a lot of slack in Beaumont about people that are in supervisory positions. But I come to say today, you're doing a great job. The people that you've put in place in these supervisory positions, as well as Beaumont City employees, not just because of what happened in an emergency situation for my family, it's other things that I have seen being done around the city, because I do move around in the city a whole lot. Some people know me as Ms. May, but I see a lot, and I see a lot where things are being done in a positive way. So, I come to give flowers in recognition to the Beaumont City supervisors and city employees that are giving 100% in doing whatever they can do to attempt to help the residents of Beaumont. And thank you, guys. Continue doing a good job.
Thank you.
Mike Gett, seventy-nine fifty Phelan, Beaumont, Texas. Item number ten on the agenda.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I'm here to talk to you about the Caleb Fenter case. The union and some of the current council members are saying publicly that this lawsuit is simply over making sure that our EMS employees are given civil service protection, but there's a lot more to it than that. Back on February 5th, I sent a text message to the president of the fire union, in which I said, "I've been asked as to why the city could not provide our civil EMTs civil service protection. I believe I can support that, making that happen, but I do not see why I've received an email from you regarding the Fenter case and your proposal to make our EMTs civil service yet keep their wages at current levels." Did you send that? The next day, I received from Jeff Neesum their proposal dated November 4th, 2024, in which he confirmed that the rate of pay for the newly classified EMTs would have to be negotiated. He also proposed that the union's attorney fees be paid, and at the present time, it's my belief that those attorney's fees are around $80,000. It is true that a local judge granted a summary judgment directing that Caleb Fenter be sworn in as a firefighter. Nothing about wages was discussed as part of that court order, other than Mr. Fenter and other civilian EMS employees would need to receive all the benefits of being a firefighter, even though they were not legally able to do fire suppression activities. This presumptively includes receiving the same wages as firefighters. I was part of the city council that unanimously directed the city attorney to appeal this decision to the Court of Appeals. Now, here's what keeps getting glossed over. The Court of Appeals issued a written opinion reversing the lower court's granting of the summary judgment. The Court of Appeals also said that Mr. Fenter and his attorney had not properly pled the case to be able to grant the relief that Fenter was seeking, and they sent the case back to Judge Sanderson with instructions to Mr. Fenter to replead his case. Mr. Fenter did not make any substantive changes in his pleadings. Instead, he again asked the lower court to grant him a summary judgment, which Judge Sanderson again granted. And accordingly, the city once again directed the city attorney to file an appeal, and that is what is pending before the Court of Appeals. At the present time, the city has filed its brief in the Court of Appeals. The fire union has not. They have till the end of the month. Why in the world would this city council vote to withdraw the appeal and pay the fire union attorney $80,000 in a case they did not prevail in? Is that fiscal responsibility? Why not let the Court of Appeals decide the case and provide a reasoned, well-written opinion on the matter? Thank you.
Thank you.
Rose Rendell, sixty-five fifty Lexington Drive, Beaumont, Texas.
I'm here as a neighbor and as somebody who believes in liberty and human dignity, values I hope you also hold dear. Friday night around 8:00 PM, I was informed by some friends that a number of people had witnessed a masked man in plain clothes abducted a woman from Beaumont in an HEV parking lot. This is not an isolated incident. It is merely Beaumont's first clear example. While we can presume, guess, that this man operated on behalf of border enforcement, we have no real way of knowing. At the federal level, border agents have been declared above scrutiny, oversight, and accountability. They do not work with cities and counties. They come into our neighborhoods and terrorize our neighbors without even informing the city of their actions. Our city cannot be another place that permits actions such as that that erode the Constitution and local authority. Accountability must be the norm for all law enforcement, local or federal. At the very least, I would like to be able to tell the difference between law enforcement and violent armed thugs engaged in human trafficking, and right now, I can't. I can't tell the difference. As city council, you have the power to draw a line in the sand in order to protect Beaumont and prevent our city from being silently complicit... in being silently complicit in disgusting abuses of power. Just this year, Hayes County, Texas, passed a resolution limiting cooperation with border enforcement unless certain standards of accountability were met. The resolution demands that border enforcement agents adhere to basic constitutional principles, cooperate with local officials by notifying them of who was taken, under what authority, where they were transported, and why. Demands that they wear body cameras, name badges, clearly display organizational insignia, and cannot wear face coverings except as medically necessary. Hayes County is encouraging every city and county in Texas, and indeed, the entire United States, to adopt a similar model. In the text of their resolution, they call their resolution "a patriotic act of fidelity." I agree.
Vernon Durton, 16436 West Berry Road, Beaumont, Texas.
Hello, city council, mayor. And first time addressing y'all, and I want to welcome the new members. You adopted and inherited a city that is going backwards. There's a bond issue that's going to be voted on soon. A historic site tear apart. I play golf. I'm not going to say I'm not that good, but I play golf. We've allowed decisions in the past to erode our city to a point where people are moving out. If I want to play a good game of golf, I go to Beaumont Country Club. It's about $300 a month. There are several members that I play with, but I can't afford $300 a month. But if we allow this bond issue to fail, it'd be just another chapter in the book of Beaumont that we've allowed poor decisions by special interest groups to erode our city. We had an opportunity some years back to do something downtown. And special interest groups came in and got your attention, their attention. And downtown is struggling. Now, we're talking about a hotel and a Riverwalk at a much higher price. I've always held that it's better to build strong boys than to repair broken men. We're trying to repair a broken city because decisions in the past have allowed the erosion of special places in our city, one being the golf course, other one being downtown. So hopefully, as you have adopted and inherited these problems, you would do what's best for the city and not special interest groups. I didn't think I would be agreeing with Mike Getz very much, but what he just said was true. What Mike Getz said was true. I have 40 seconds left, and one thing I want to talk about is the Juneteenth celebration was inside. Great decision. Hope we continue to have it inside. Three minutes is too short. Everybody out there will tell you, Mr. Krab comes up here. You know, we all enjoy him. Bless his heart. But three minutes is too short. You've reduced the times of month that you meet, but you haven't extended the time that people are going to be able to talk. Extend the time. Stop being a dictator. Thank you.
Thank you.
Addie Allen, 9695 Gross, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon, City Manager, Mayor, and Council and administrative staff, Addie Allen. And my name is called several times, and I'm just floating on air. But the one thing that I want you to know is the reason my name is floating is because I'm concerned about the citizens of Beaumont. I talk very slow, and I agree with Mr. Durden, three minutes is not enough. However, there was a sound just this past week, a boom. And I was called. Several people in the Fleetwood area said, what in the world is that? Now, you can have Stan, and you can have all of the other methods and modes of operation, but there is a human factor. And I can tell you, my mother had eye surgery for Rita. She was supposed to get her checkup. This is kind of funny, but sad. The doctor was gone, left town. She had the appointment. We went for the appointment before town, you know, before we evacuated. So you've got people that are going to take care of their families first. I'm going to play, if you will. There's a sound here. And I know this is my time. I'm sorry. But there is a sound of a siren, if you don't know what I'm talking about. Years ago. This used to happen in Beaumont years ago, just like the presentation, the presenter said. There's people I've talked to that are 80 years old. They said it happened on a Monday, and that was a test. So like barrel, electricity was gone for some days. So we can have computers. We can have phones. We can have iPads. We can have all those things. But if they go down, if the satellite goes down in T-Mobile that I have, I buffer all the time. I'm registered for 311, but the last two events, I was not called. That's the human factor. But bottom line, there's two types of sirens. There's an indoor and an outdoor. That was her presentation. An indoor, an outdoor, there's rotating, and there's also a dual. There's stainless steel. There's backup batteries. So the failure, unlike human, is null and void most of the time. 29 is not needed in the city of Beaumont. Mostly, if you start with the north end, it will flood and crest every time it rains.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you for serving.
That's all I have, Mayor.
All right. With that, if there's no one else that signed up for public comments, as it appears not, we will move into the consent agenda. And although we did have a couple of people speak on item D, we're going to remove that from the consent agenda for some additional information. And with that, may we have a motion and a second for approval of the consent agenda minus item number D. We need to turn our mics on. So that would be Councilwoman Sherwood and Councilman Williams with the second. All right. There is a motion and a second for approval of the consent agenda minus item D. Is there any discussion? Councilman Turner.
On item G, I had a citizen that called me and asked me, can I explain what a lift station is and does? And I told him, maybe I would ask it in the council meeting. Ms. Molly, if you don't mind, can you kind of educate, you know, the people who may not know what it actually does?
So the, our most, 90, 95% of our collection system for sanitary sewer is considered gravity. That means it's not pumped. When it goes down the drain, the pipes are sloped in such a way that the water can continue downhill without any other assistance besides gravity. And once it reaches a significant depth, and it cannot continue because it's trying to get to the sewer plant over on Laughin Road, then it's collected in a basin, which we call a wet well. And then there's pumps to pump it to a higher elevation or to a higher pressure, and then it can continue on on its journey to the sewer plant. And so the Harriet Street Lift Station is easily one of our oldest lift stations. It's located on the same site where the South Park Elevated Water Storage Tank is situated. But that's essentially, it's a pump station to help keep the flow going to its final destination.
And what would happen if you didn't have some of these pump stations?
You would have to, because you cannot continue to dig deeper and deeper economically, you would have to find some sort of a way to then, like I said, either lift it or pump it to get to the final treatment destination.
Yes, ma'am. I just wanted, I just thought it was important to get that explained. I couldn't explain it as detailed as you, so.
Yes, sir. It's, they are very necessary, especially because our terrain is so flat. The slopes of the pipes and the gravity system can only, your, start over. The TCEQ dictates how flat we can set those pipes, and it's dependent on the size of the pipe. So you do have to have significant depth. It gets very expensive. It can get very dangerous. The deeper you go in these soils that are just very unsuitable for excavation.
Councilman Durio.
Yes, on item H, the purchase of the ambulance, and said that it was in a, it had to be replaced because it was in a wreck, I guess. Was there an insurance settlement on that? Was it our fault, or was it somebody else's fault?
So it's ongoing. This is in reference to the recent accident. So as you know, it takes a while for us to settle with insurance, but it also takes a while for them to custom build an ambulance. So this is just to make sure we keep them in number of ambulances in service.
So we have, I guess, filed a claim?
It's in litigation, yes, sir. We're preparing. We've done all, taken all the necessary legal steps. But most, the average person doesn't carry the amount of insurance, property insurance to cover something like that.
So our EMS personnel would not have fought in the accident?
So as far as the accident report goes for the officer, there was no contributing factors attributed to our driver at the scene of the accident. But that's also under review.
Okay.
Thanks.
Councilman Turner.
Mr. Manager, I know you're familiar with the bond process is. I'm just kind of looking at ways we could assist with public safety as far as ambulances and police vehicles and fire trucks. It kind of can be relatable. Have you ever seen vehicles being inserted in bonds?
Councilman Turner, I don't know that this is the time we can cover that, but I appreciate you trying to get that in.
Looking at the city attorney, she gives me an ugly look by the time you get halfway through.
You see, I didn't even look at her, right?
Yeah.
He knows.
Does anybody else have anything on consent agenda items? If not, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda minus item number D, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number D, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Council consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to submit a grant application for the fiscal year 2025 Emergency Supplemental Historic Preservation Fund Preservation Grant and execute a contract with the National Park Service to receive funds for damage repairs to the Temple, to the Brave, and the Jefferson Theater. And this comes with the recommendation of approval, and there is no required match.
So move to approve.
Second.
There is a motion and a second for approval. Is there any discussion?
One moment. I did want to clarify, in the memo, I had put that that it was approved on the National Register. I need to correct that. It was approved for nomination by the Texas Historic Commission's Board of Review in 2024. It's in the review process, and we anticipate that the structure will be listed in the National Register within the next 90 days. So I just wanted to clarify that difference, that it is approved for nomination.
Okay. Is our motion sufficient, as it is? All right. All those in favor of approving item D from the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number one, please?
All right. Council consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to award a contract to King Solution Services LLC of Houston, Texas, for the street rehab Phase 6 sewer line replacement project, and it comes with the recommendation of approval of the resolution. I will note, this is the second lowest bidder on the project, but it comes recommended by staff.
All right. Is there a motion for item number one?
Move to approve.
Second.
There is a motion and a second for approval of item number one. Is there any discussion? Councilman Durio.
So I noticed that it was, it was the second, the second lowest, or lowest bid that got it. The one out of Houston, it was higher than the first one.
Yes, sir.
One out of Spring.
Yes, sir.
And I guess you kind of explained a little bit. Can you explain for the, why we did it this way this time?
There was, so we require our contractors to have a certain level of experience in this type of construction. And also, we do reference checks of all of our vendors. And we could not get good references, or we could not get responses to our requests for references. And so we went back, asked for additional references. And so between that and the limited experience that was submitted in their documentation, we recommend going with the second lowest bid.
Okay. There wasn't any, any local companies that bid?
Unfortunately, what we've noticed over time since we started the pipe bursting program in 2000 is that these contractors out of the Houston area have basically pushed most of our local companies out of the pipe bursting business. The locals just can't compete on, in this, in this type of work.
Thank you.
Councilman Hilliard.
So I would be remiss to ask, when we do this, these Houston companies, how many change orders end up being sent down the pipe after the service has begun?
It ends up being specific to the conditions that they encounter. And if Mike Harris is here, he can definitely speak to that as well. But we, it depends on the adverse soil conditions, like what we brought a change order before y'all recently at the intersection on Grand Street, where we hit a high-water table and water-bearing sands. Or we find that, sometimes we find a section of pipe that's good, that's not suitable for pipe bursting. Or, you know, the manholes need to be upsized or upgraded. So we do find, we do encounter situations where we do have change orders. But of course, we always fully vet every request for any change order and really push back to make sure that it is warranted, is connected to this project, and is work that is necessary to be done.
So they don't do any boring? They don't come out and walk the site of where it may take place? So what is, what is entailed in this, this cost? It's just what it'll cost for them to come out in the event we have a burst pipe, or?
Oh, no. This is, so pipe bursting is a trenchless method to replace sanitary sewer pipe. So most of the pipes that we are replacing are either going to be concrete or clay. And in these soils, there's so much shifting, the joints will separate or break. Also, concrete pipe is not a suitable material for sanitary sewer because the sewer gases react with the concrete. So what the contractor will do is, instead of having to dig up the entire length of pipe to replace it, they only have to dig at the manholes and at the services. And we fuse a solid wall, plastic pipe, high-density polyethylene, fuse it together for the length of the block, say. And it is pulled in with, basically using a winch. And then, once the pipe is in, we will cut in the services and set them in. So you greatly reduce the amount of excavation that you have to do, which reduces the risk in the work. And you get a brand-new sewer line that has no joints to later separate and cause future sewer issues.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Williams.
Where is this section of the sewer line replacement happening at?
It's going to be in several locations throughout the city. This is going, this work- This is going, this work is going to be happening ahead of a, our street rehab phase six project. And so there's going to be locations such as along Garner Road. There is going to also be some work on both sides of SB Road near Franklin. There's some work on Prairie, and there's some work in the south end, next, next to Highland from Harriet to Pipkin Street. We got a short section on East Florida.
And how old are the current lines?
Most of these lines that we are replacing would have been installed as early as the 40s, probably until the early 70s.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. If there's no other discussion, all in favor of approving item number one, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number two, please?
Council consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to award a contract to BDS Constructors LLC doing business as MK Constructors of Vador, Texas for the citywide ditching program phase three. And it comes with the recommendation of approval.
Is there a motion for item number two?
Move to approve.
Is there a second for approval?
Second.
There is a motion and a second for approval of item number two. Is there any discussion? Councilman Turner, then Councilman Durio.
Just when we, we do the vetting of some of these contractors with the citywide ditching, I know just from being in some of the million neighborhood associations, I know we recently did that, but a lot of those citizens had some concerns with, you know, how it happened with them. I don't know if it's the same contractor, but just if we can kind of, I guess, monitor it a little bit tighter this time, I, I would like to, I would appreciate it.
Learning a lot of lessons in this program, definitely. The contractor that we are recommending award for in this contract is a different contractor.
Thank you.
So we are, there are a lot more culverts that are scheduled in this contract than in previous contracts. So I think it, it worked out, but this is a new contractor.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilman Durio.
So when we receive these bids, I think we've done it before. If it's a, a local contractor and it's within a certain price of the, of the best bid, we able to use it? Is that the case in this one? Because it looks like it's a difference of, what, $85,000 or something?
There is a, the state law puts a cap on the value of the contract where the local bidder preference policy goes into effect. So they have to be office within the city limits of Beaumont. A certain percentage of their employees must also live in the city limits of Beaumont. And the value of the contract, I think, is capped at like $150,000.
Okay. So this didn't meet those qualifications?
No, sir.
All right. Thank you, Molly.
You're welcome.
If there's no other questions or discussion, all those in favor of the item number two, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number three?
Council consider a resolution rejecting the bids received for the wall and Avenue C Lift Station Rehabilitation Project. And it comes with the recommendation of approval of the resolution.
Is there a motion for item number three?
So move to approve rejection.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Williams. So there is a motion and a second for approval of item number three. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving item number three as read, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number four?
Council consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute change order number two, accept maintenance, and authorize final payment to Texas Drainage, Inc. for the citywide ditching program phase two B. And it comes with the recommendation of approval of the resolution.
Is there a motion for item number four?
Make a motion we approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion and a second for approval of item number four. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving item number four, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number six, please? Excuse me, five.
Let me make sure I'm on the right one. Yes. Council consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to award a contract to Red Zone Robotics, Inc. of Warren Dale, Pennsylvania for the Senator Sewer Truck Lane Multi-Sensor Inspection Project. And it comes with the recommendation of approval of the resolution.
Is there a motion for item number five?
Move to approve.
Second.
There is a motion and a second for approval of item number five. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving item number five, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number six?
Council consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to award a contract to TRP Construction Group LLC of Halton City, Texas for the citywide pavement markings phase four. And it comes with the recommendation of approval of the resolution.
Is there a motion for item number six?
Make a motion approve.
Second.
Motion and a second for approval of item number six. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving item number six, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number seven?
Council consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to award a contract to ALCO LLC of Beaumont, Texas for the street rehabilitation citywide phase six. And it comes with the recommendation of approval.
Is there a motion for item number seven?
So move to approve.
Second.
There is a motion and a second for approval of item number seven. Is there any discussion? Councilman Turner.
Ms. Molly, as you mentioned earlier, with some of the pipe bursting that was going into like that Highland area, is this some of the funding that's going into fixing the streets for the Highland area? I just want to show how it kind of balancing out that it is making sense.
Yes, sir. What we've learned, one of the important lessons is when you pave a road, you don't want to come right back in and do a utility repair. So we've identified the locations where there's sanitary sewer that's going to be in future need of replacement. And that's what that contract that you approved does. Then we will come back, and once that work is completed, we'll come back in and pave the roads that were identified in this street rehab contract. And I know that, I want to also point out, in the wine glass edition, there was quite a bit of work that the Drainage District did. And these streets that were affected by the Drainage District's work are included in this contract. I know that, that, that neighborhood has been anxious for this work to get underway. And so I'm happy to report that that work will be handled in this contract.
Councilman Durio.
So Councilman Turner mentioned Highland Street project. And so they're going to repave, we're going to repave Highland Street. But part of that project is to make sure everything under Highland is good and fix it before we start repaving it, correct?
Yes, there's actually going to be a separate work to add Highland's sewer, to get that replaced. We've already investigated the storm sewer. We have cleaned all the lines that, on the storm sewer side, which really did see a benefit from that in these recent rains. We're going to do the sewer next. And then when we do the actual repaving of Highland, we'll have that complete package.
So for, for the residents that live in that area, it's not a delay. It's just that we're being proactive and making sure everything is right. We don't want to pave the street and then find out the stuff under the street is messed up. And then we have to break up the stuff that we just put down, correct?
Yes, please, no. We don't want that.
Okay.
Say his name.
Can't say his name?
Who you talking about?
All right. If there's no other discussion, all in favor of approving item number seven, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, would you read item number eight now?
Council consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to award a contract to Legacy Commercial Contractors LLC of Dallas, Texas for the Orange Avenue 20-inch waterline replacement. And that's from Fanning Street to Forsite Street project. And it comes with the recommendation of approval. And I would just like to note that six of the eight items on regular agenda were either to repair sewer lines, sewer projects, or water projects. And the other two were for road projects, just so citizens can see the job the council's doing on sewer lines with all of these items, are items that go directly to improving our sewer system or drainage system.
Thank you, sir. Is there a motion for item number eight?
So move to approve.
There is a motion and a second for approval of item number eight. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving item number eight, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, would you please take us into the public hearing?
Council to conduct the public hearing to receive comments regarding a grant application to the FTA for the fiscal year 2025 Bus Facilities Competitive Program to receive funds for the zip.
All right. I declare the public hearing open as, Ms. City Clerk. Okay. Demi.
We don't have anyone that wants to speak, but Demi wants to have a few words.
Good afternoon. The FTA announced the notice of funding opportunity and the city, and us and Beaumont Zip wish to submit a grant application for it. It'll be for the following projects. The first one is to install 60 bus shelters and benches citywide. The second is to procure real-time tracking software to improve our rider experience. That's where it'll track the buses and where it's at. And number three, to replace the generator. Although the project's not flashy, it is necessary to replace that because transit headquarters is a critical facility during disaster events as they do evacuations. All three projects cost a total of 2.9, I'm sorry, $2,940,000. 80% of the total cost is covered by the FTA if we were awarded this grant. And then the city would be responsible for the remaining 20%, which is $588,000. Knowing that, we reached out to Tech dot to see if they can partner with us in transportation development credits. I did receive word that they would. There's a commitment letter there. So what that means is that if we were awarded this grant, the city, they, Tech dot has agreed to subsidize the local share. So it comes at no cost to the city for all three projects. So if you guys approve the next item, then we'll submit by July 14th. And I would like to invite Claudia San Miguel, the general, or general manager of Beaumont Zip, to come speak on it as well.
Thank you.
Well, good afternoon. Real quick, the projects, for sure, the bus stops, the shelters, the canopies, the benches, that will help us provide a better experience, but not only that, promote, further promote the service. A lot of people like to take the bus, but they want to be waiting on the sun and the rain. So I'm very confident that if we were awarded this money, we're going to see an increase on ridership. The generator, like Ms. Igman chair with us, is, is, is necessary. This is not just like any generator. This is going to power our CNG plant. I really don't know the exact number, but this is a very powerful generator. It will run a couple of blocks, and we're just going to be running that alone. It's, it's a big draw of energy that is required. It runs on CNG, which is great, because we don't have to be pouring fuel on it or anything like that. The minute the power goes off, the minute that generator kicks in. And again, like I said, it's something that's going to ensure that our buses in, in the need of an evacuation, that's been discussed a lot this afternoon, the bus are going to be able to run for the public. Questions?
Any questions? It's great news. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nobody signed up? All right. The public hearing is closed. Is there a motion for item number nine?
Make a motion we approve.
Second.
There is a motion and a second for approval of item number nine. Is there any discussion?
I'm sorry, can I get the motion in second again? Do you want to read?
Yeah, we need you to.
We'll do it again.
Council consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to submit a grant application to the Federal Transit Administration, FTA, to receive funds for the zip. And it comes with the recommendation of approval.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Now, may we have a motion?
I make a recommendation we approve.
Thank you. All right. There is a motion and a second for approval of item number nine. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving item number nine, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. At this time, we will recess into executive session, and we will return to take action on item number 10. Thank you.
I call the meeting back to order, may I have roll call please?
Mayor West.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Turner. Councilmember Durio.
Present.
Councilmember Hilliard. Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Sherwood. Councilmember Crenshaw. Thank you.
Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number 10, please?
Counsel to consider resolution authorizing the settlement of the lawsuit style Caleb Fenter and Beaumont Professional Firefighters Local 399 into Venus versus City of Beaumont, Christopher S. Boone, Kenneth Williams, Rod West, Earl White, Taylor Neeld, Mike Getz, Otwin Samuel, Charles Dureo, Abbott Turner, and Randy Fellshaw. And that comes with no recommendation.
Is there a motion for item number 10?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we table this item.
Is there a second? There is a motion and a second to table this item, is there any discussion? All those in favor of tabling the item, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, the motion is carried. Alright, with that, we're gonna begin with council member comments. Councilman Dur- who, it doesn't matter, Councilman Durio.
I think I've done it first, the last three times, but that's okay. My list is not that long. They're not here, but congratulations to the Renegade again, that's a positive thing for Beaumont. I got an email earlier this week, and I think the mayor got it too, about a Mr. Jeffrey Green that works in Solid Waste, and he was out there working, and he found an elderly gentleman was laid out on the ground, and he stopped and assisted with that gentleman until first responders got there. So that's another example of a type of employees that we have in the city of Beaumont, and I just wanted to recognize Mr. Green for that. Also, Chief Oknecheck, another example of city employees, of the city of Beaumont employees, that was awesome, that's something that went nationwide. And zip drivers, what did they drive, a hundred and some thousand miles without getting in an accident? Some more awesome employees. Shaquena did a great job as well. I think that's it, I have one other thing, I'd like to look into getting the time extended when folks speak, you know, something to look at. But one other thing, a good friend of mine, I went through the fire academy with him in 1986, and his name is Frank Neal, and he passed this past Sunday. And he's a good guy, if you guys look him up on social media, on Facebook, there's a lot of tributes to Frank. I think some of y'all have met Frank before, he's been to some meetings before, but he was a real good guy, and he's a very close friend of mine, like I said, we went through the fire academy together, and we both retired from the Beaumont Fire Department, and so he's gonna be missed, and that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Hilliard?
Well, thank you, and I'll reiterate, our employees are doing amazing things, and I think that's awesome, and it's something that should be highlighted because we see enough negativity, that I think it's cool that we're focusing on some really neat stuff that our city's doing. I would like to, I would like to see us form a charter amendment committee to focus on term limits. It's one of the things that I ran on, and I would like to see a committee put together to impose term limits, or look at imposing term limits.
I would also like to see a committee formed for, to streamline the code and, you know, bring together architects, builders, home builders, and see how we can streamline and make our red tag process better, to make Beaumont more open, find out what they feel is wrong with the city, and work with Demi to come up with a better way for our code and enforcement. And other than that, I've had an opportunity to meet with all the, most of the heads of the department, and I just have to give Kenneth the green light, say, hey, you did good, you've got some really good people working for you, and so I really enjoyed meeting them, these are some really good people. So, that's it.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Turner?
I agree with term limits as well, I think we already have language ready for it, so...
But we're prohibited from bringing it back to the voters for two years, I believe the charter was approved in November of 2023. So if you wanted to put it on the ballot for November of 2025, it would have to be, it's two years exactly, so you couldn't do it this November, you'd actually have to wait, neither do it in May or following, because it's two years exactly. It was, it was not, it was not the charter committee's decision, the language was actually changed by council, not by the charter committee, the charter committee, you're welcome, the charter committee put forth some very favorable language for both term limits and term lengths, and that language was changed by council. So, we can't bring it back this November, it has to be exactly two years.
Yeah, we did, the last charter amendment we did was November 7th of 2023.
So you have to wait exactly two years, so you wouldn't be able to bring it back until two years post that date.
Okay, I mean, is that possible, can we do that? Do it in May. Do it in May?
So you couldn't do it this November, you would actually have to do it in May.
Okay, okay, that's fine.
If I'm not mistaken, wasn't Councilman Crenshaw like the chairman of that committee?
He was, and he did a very good job, but if we point fingers, it was a motion, it was a motion brought by a former council member that you seconded, I've never forgiven you for that. That changed it, but to that end, I will tell you that we haven't, we didn't budget for a May election for this year, so that would be, if that's something that council wants to do now, is the time to bring it up, so we can include that in the budget, because it's not budgeted for, we typically try to bring it during budget years.
Okay.
Charter amendments to what's on there for you guys to run, we can add those referendums in the May election for 2027.
Yeah, but May 26 is what we were talking about, I think, but...
It's too soon, isn't it?
No.
No? Well, you could do it in November, special election, you'd have to call, yeah, special.
Yeah, if you did it, if you did it in May of next year, you'd have to call it, but what I'm saying is that we have, if that's something that council wants to do, we need to know now.
Budget, right, correct.
So we need to budget for it, and make the proper preparations for it, because there is a timeline for those things, so if that's, obviously that was something that was brought up by our council member, so if there was, if there's an interest, we would need someone to second it, we could put it on the ballot, put it on the agenda for discussion.
My mic's still on, I second it. Chris, condolences, sorry for your loss, dearly your compliments about our city employees, I feel like they're doing an amazing job, and I do also want to say the energy today, just, it was contagious, and I think it kind of spread through us being able to talk to and work through some tough things, and I think we're gonna get to where we need to go.
Thank you, Councilman, Councilman Williams?
Yeah, Joey, I could get behind that as well, I appreciate bringing that up. Just 4th of July is this weekend, and I just want to say, you know, I'm proud to be an American, I think this is a great country, the greatest country in the world, and for everybody that's come before us, and has gotten us to where we are, and the way this country is, is part of the reason why we're all sitting here, and so we all play a part in that, and I look forward to the event downtown, and what Emily puts together, and happy 4th of July, and I'm proud to be an American.
Thank you, Councilman, Councilwoman?
Congratulations to the Beaumont Renegades, congratulations to Quentin Thomas Jr. again, congratulations to the ExxonMobil Energy Scholars, congratulations to Zip Transit, Safety First, the recipients, I'm super excited about that, I work in transportation, so I know how important that is. Congratulations Chief Oknecheck for doing good, for goodness sake. Thank you, Ms. May, for coming up with positive words of encouragement. I do want to look into how we identify ICE and their behavior locally, and making sure that people aren't misconstruing them for being somebody that they're not, I don't know. Kudos to Sewer and Drainage on the projects that are underway, because I know War III thinks heavily about that, and I do want you all, lastly, to remember that it is hurricane season, hurricane preparedness matters, and the insurance agent in me says, insurance is money when it matters most, make sure that you're checking up on your policies.
Councilman Crenshaw?
Councilmember, could you provide clarity, you said you want us to check up on ICE's, like what exactly are you...
Like if they're gonna be out, you know, like the lady suggested, maybe ID badges, maybe ways to identify what they're working in, and what capacity and...
What she recommended was a resolution that was passed by another city slash county, is that something that council is asking, I will tell you that that's a resolution that council can pass, but there's not really a lot of enforcement authority behind it, it's definitely a resolution to provide comfort to your citizens, but there's no enforcement authority on behalf of our police officers that would be able to actively enforce those provisions.
Okay, well, it is, it is an issue in particular in War III, and I'd hate to see a citizen get involved in something that's actually something that's legal, you know?
I understand, but I wanted to make sense, if that's something that council wanted to pursue, obviously, if you're asking for that and you have a second, we could definitely bring that for it, but I want council to be clear that the ordinance is good in theory, but not enforceable.
Thank you.
People just jumping out of cars and grabbing people, and people go, well, that must be ICE, and it's not really ICE, you know, I mean, when does that start happening, when do we have copycats? So, yeah, I give, I mean, I've...
Okay, so, just asking for clarity, I can't really get to any, it's not a posted item, but I can, whatever council directs, we can look into it, it's not something that...
I appreciate you.
And that might be a report on ICE and what you can do, because there's some, a lot of things that's tied to federal grants, et cetera, if you don't cooperate with ICE, and then the state legislature just passed some legislation too about cities that don't, so we might just need an update on that legislation, and then go from there, and what we can do and what we can't do.
I appreciate you, thank you.
Thank you. Madam City Attorney?
Oh, yeah, so just happy 4th of July to everyone, my baby is home, to Councilmember Williams' point, definitely appreciate all of those who make the sacrifice to serve, so that we can have the freedoms that we do, I will be celebrating with my little soldier who's home for the holidays, so I'm super excited about that, do not call me.
Alright.
Kidding, seriously.
Mr. Assistant to the City Manager, you have any question, you have anything?
So, we'll be monitoring the special session that the governor called, it starts July 21st, and it's gonna go for 30 days, so we'll probably bring you guys an update on different legislation that impacted cities, departments, there are some things that already start September 1, but we'll just monitor the session, and then we'll identify a follow-up to you guys, I know you mentioned some legislation with different things, so that's our next step on that end, that's all.
Thank you.
I do want to give condolences to Frank Neal, who was not just our retired firefighter, but he was also my classmate, someone whom I love dearly, known for a long time, so I just want to give condolences to his family, thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to mention Mr. Neal too, a retired firefighter, he's one of the people that befriended me when I moved to Beaumont, I didn't know him from anybody else, and he really made me feel welcome in Beaumont, so it's sad to see that he's not with us anymore. And just a reminder that City Hall will be closed soon Friday for the 4th of July.
And Councilman Durio?
I just want to congratulate Miles on his move up to the big table.
Alright, and with that, the meeting is now adjourned. All right, and with that, the meeting is now adjourned.